Good evening. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting for Monday, December 18th, 2017. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 14th, 2017, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Mahmood may have a roll call.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Cooper? Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kins?
Dr. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Oh, okay, thank you. We're going to move to executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides the public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough in the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey, as follows. There'll be three matters. The matters to be discussed will be a legal matter, a personnel matter, and a Hillsborough Education Association grievance matter. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Okay, you have a motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we plan to be back at 7:30 for a regular meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back from executive session. Mr. Mahmood may have a roll call, please.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kins?
Dr. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two sets of minutes in your packets today. Let's start with the executive session minutes from December 11th. Let's have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And also, we have the regular public meeting minutes for December 11th.
So moved.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got it.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. We had some, quite a bit of correspondence as listed, and I'd like to turn the program over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to take a few moments to speak on behalf of the Board of Education and thank Ms. Jennifer Haley for her time and efforts as a member of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. This evening is Jen's last meeting, and I want to thank her for her service and leadership over the past six years. Jen and other members of the Board of Education who sit at this day as twice a month do so as volunteers. They receive no payment for this elected position. In addition to these twice monthly meetings, Jen and other board members also attend monthly committee meetings, review materials and meeting minutes, attend student, school, and staff events, and meet with community members to get an understanding of the will of the people. In April 2011, Jen was elected to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education and has served on, as well as led, the Operations Committee, was a member of the Governance Committee, and was chosen twice to serve as Vice President of the Board of Ed. She has also served in such positions as liaison to the town government and the board's legislative representative. During Jen's two terms on the Board of Education, she has been a firm supporter of providing Hillsborough students with a first-class education while keeping in mind the financial concerns that face the Hillsborough community. Jen has dedicated many hours as a Board of Education member to making our schools a fantastic place for our students, parents, teachers, and staff. Jen is dedicated to our town and our students. She joined the Board of Education in the spirit of community service, and I am certain that she will continue to volunteer her time and efforts throughout this community. Jen, thank you for your time, your energy, and your dedication during these past six years. You have been a valuable member of this Board of Education. At this time, I would like, Greg, to present you with a plaque as a token of our gratitude to your dedication to students, teachers, staff, and the community of Hillsborough. Thank you, Jen.
Can I just have a mic for one second to say?
Please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to my fellow board members, to the community for twice electing me, and really for everybody's support. As you can see tonight, on tonight's agenda, we are going to have a resignation on this Board of Ed, and I just want to make the public aware that I actually am going to file my petition to fill that seat. I just wanted to say something.
Thank you, Jen. Yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you, Ms. Haley, for keeping our town fiscally savvy and for making your first priority our students and teachers.
Thank you.
I'm going to say my mark.
Okay, I'm also happy to share some additional wonderful news from around the district with our board and the Hillsborough community this evening. Congratulations to 20 of our Hillsborough High School choral members. This year, our chorus, led by their fantastic director, Ms. Juliana Lobiondo, has 20 students, 20, accepted into the Central Jersey Music Educators Regional Chorus. This beats last year's results of 15 student acceptances and sets a new all-time high for Hillsborough High School. Congratulations to the following students: Amira Ali, Lena Belash, Evan Santafonte, Gilliana Cicatelli, Matthew Cullen, Gillian Cusalino, Sean Desay, Zoe Hack, Ryan Honward, Margaret Johnson, Lyra Congsel, Rebecca Letts, Brandon Luckenbaugh, Kate McHale, Erin Mooney, who was a top scorer for the Sopranos II, Emily Obinar, Megan Swaney, Madison Sheehan, Natalie Sheek, Sarudy Yamamandra. Also, congratulations to three band students who earned spots as well: Sarah Liu for Wind Ensemble, Colin Byer for Symphonic Band, Hannah McCarthy for Percussion Ensemble. Congratulations to these 23 students. What a fantastic accomplishment. It's also my pleasure to announce that last Monday, 7th grader Grant Bogushevsky was asked to try out for the Greater Princeton Youth Orchestra for playing his upright bass. On Tuesday afternoon, Grant was awarded a seat to play in this prestigious orchestra. Please join me in recognizing Grant's accomplishment. All year long, but especially during the holiday season, our schools teach as well as demonstrate the idea of giving back to those in need. During this season, our school holds activities such as food drives, giving trees for those less fortunate, and toy drives. Students at Woodford Elementary School have spent the last few weeks collecting pajamas. The school's teachers and students and staff will donate 220 pairs of brand-new pajamas as part of the Scholastic Reading Club Great Pajama Drive. The school will send the collection of pajamas to Scholastic, and Scholastic will match each set donated of donated pajamas with a book as part of the company's 9th Annual Great Bedtime Story Pajama Drive. The donations then will be sent to the Pajama Program, a nonprofit organization that provides new pajamas and books to children in need. This is the fourth year Woodford has held this Pajama Drive. Congratulations to Woodford School's students, staff, and faculty on the success of the Pajama Drive. That's what I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Committees did meet in the past week, so we're going to go to committee reports. Some of the committees met. Education Committee met, so I'm going to start with Mrs. Haas.
Thank you. Okay, the Education Committee met on December 14th, and we took care of a number of curricular matters. We're going to be bringing forward a new course proposal for a marketing class. We discussed a class regarding a new class which would be called Community Connections, and this would come up with community needs and figure out how to solve them. We recommended both of those classes. We've also consolidated some of the classes in Family and Consumer Science. We have a number of cooking food classes, which we're now going to collapse into introduction -- the basic foods class was going to be changed to Introduction to Culinary Arts and Baking, and there will also be an Advanced Culinary Arts class, and our Introduction to Technology class is now going to be Integrative STEM. So those are some of the curriculum changes we discussed. Graphic Arts has been a full-year, five-year, five-credit course, and has become under-enrolled. So after a lot of discussions with the curriculum people, it was decided to reduce that to a half, to a 2.5 credit class, one semester. And hopefully, the curriculum revision will increase the modernization of what graphic arts has become. So all of that review has taken place, and we recommend to the full board that course revision. We also did policy revision review on Policy 5535 Passive Breath Alcohol Censor Device to include that students may be screened on a random basis. There will also be clarification that this policy will apply to students only. We also had a discussion about second-step curriculum, where it was clarified that the curriculum is not meant to be a DARE-style curriculum. It's more about decision-making and skills that students need for drug prevention. We also will be getting some feedback from Joel Handler, our Director of Technology, about the feasibility of having videos running while parents are picking up their Chromebooks, and if we could implement a page about alcohol-drug awareness when students open up their Chromebooks. We further discussed the vaping and substance abuse policy. When we make vaping devices drug paraphernalia, there will also be a change in the student code of conduct. Students in possession of vaping devices will follow the procedure for students being considered under the influence. They will be sent out for drug testing, and if found to be under the influence, the students will serve five days of in-school suspension, have five meetings with the SAC, and be ineligible to participate in school activities for 30 days. Additionally, the Hillsborough Township Police Department will issue tickets with fines that will escalate with each offense. This information will be placed on the district website and very shortly after the policy is voted upon. We also -- okay, we also discussed, well, our nursing supervisor also discussed that as a result of the changing, changes to the vaping policy, there will be more students that will have to be sent out for testing, and she's looking for a facility that can test students after school hours. So these are the kinds of things that will have to be reinforced with students in the school, so that's it. And then, on December 13th, there was an excellent program called Chasing the Dragon, and many of us attended that, and it was an incredibly impactful program. And I'd just like to thank Gil Pollardi for putting that whole thing together. It was, as I said, very impactful, and it's on our website, front page of our website. If you look under the tweeting area, it's right there with a link. You can watch the whole film. It's an FBI film. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. I'm going to provide the Operations Committee report myself. Operations Committee met on December 13th. We had a report from Mr. Quintero, who's the Director of Facilities. He provided a report from Core Mechanical, who are one of our consultants for different mechanical HVAC systems. But we're not going to do -- we're basically, we're waiting for the major facilities assessment report, which is due in January 2018. So we're not making any decisions on any HVAC projects until that time. Mr. Gromen from EDI, our environmental consultant, was also at our meeting. He updated us on the lead testing. It's not complete. At least it wasn't as of the middle of last week, so it's about less than a third, I think, complete. In schools, okay. We had discussion about closing schools during excessive heat. We reviewed a policy that another school district has about, I think it was something like, Dr. Schiff, correct me if I'm wrong, if temperatures reached above 95 degrees.
105.
105 or something.
Heat index.
Heat index. Well, we're not, we're not, the Operations Committee is not recommending a formal policy on closing schools during excessive heat at this time. Dr. Schiff shared with us that it's very difficult for him to close the entire, he needs to close the entire district for heat. He would have to close the entire district. And much of the district is now air-conditioned, and it'd be very difficult for him to close the high school, for instance, which is mostly air-conditioned, on a day when another school has excessive heat. The committee questioned about transportation issues with that, and the response from Transportation Department was that they basically have to either have a half-day for the entire district or close the entire district. They can't have a half-day for only some schools. So that's where we are standing right now. I think we'll revisit this again, but that's where we are right now on it. We talked about, oh, Mr. Mahmood had a financial consideration for us, which is, I think, is on tonight's agenda. When we did the paving at the middle school and the turf project, there was a little over $1 million taken, withdrawn from capital reserve. According to the county business administrator, that was allocated to Fund 10, but after we had our annual audit, our auditor recommends that that actually be reclassifying to Fund 40. So what you see on your agenda tonight, board members, is just reclassifying the same amount from one fund to another. Also, Mr. Quintero reported that he's going to begin a pilot program to have hand-drying systems at the restrooms at some of the schools. This is a pilot program to see how it does instead of using paper. We have a lot of paper consumption, and we're going to try it and see how it works, and he's going to report back to us. We looked at the budget calendar. I think all board members have received a copy of this. This is basically outlines where we are in the budget process, when the final budget needs to be passed. And finally, we reviewed the demographic study from Whitehall Associates. Did all the board members get that study?
It was part of the attachment.
Okay. It was on the attachment. Did you see it? Was it an attachment? I wasn't sure that it was. Did you see the demographic study? Mrs. Haas, was it an attachment?
I saw it months ago, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're right.
Attached to one of the operations.
It was attached, all right, that's right. I forgive me. It was attached to a previous meeting, but we finally, we finally got to it in Operations Committee. We finally were able to review it.
But is that the final?
Yes.
That's the final one, yeah, from Whitehall Associates, yeah. So actually, enrollment increases don't look too bad. They look to remain flat over the next five to 10 years, pretty much, as I recall, not --
Going down, correct?
Yeah, a little down, then a little up, but nothing to, nothing to be worried about this time. And we talked about, we talked about air conditioning at some of the elementary schools and how we might be able to do that. And Dr. Schiff brought to us that the Sunnymead HSA conducted a fundraiser for air conditioning window units. We recommended that we, when we get that donation, we accept it, of course, pending that we can actually do it. We've had other discussions with window units. So we have to, we'd have to have somebody look at it to see if the window units at the elementary school, if that's different than what we were planning, window units at this school, for instance. So we recommend that we accept the donation with some caveats that we're going to have to look at and see if it can be feasibly done. And that was it. Operations Committee, all right, so we're done with that. We'll go to, oh, any comments or questions from the board committees? Dr. Swanson?
Yes, on the Operations Committee minutes, it said that the enrollment report from 2002 to the present was going to be distributed to people in attendance at the meeting.
Yeah, we should all get that. Nobody had seen it at that meeting, so I think what happened was, I asked Ashley, I think, to send it right then at the meeting, so I didn't know it was going to wind up at the minute, so that we could all look at it. But I think now that we, we've seen that everybody should see it.
I think it's an important component to our strategic planning discussion.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
So I think it would be useful for all of us to see that, as well as the Whitehall Associates' report, which hopefully was an attachment to the Ops Committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I didn't get to look at all of the supporting documentation, but I did see that.
We'll make sure that all board members get that, too.
Thank you.
Any other comments on committee?
Just a little one.
Absolutely.
Hand dryers.
Yeah.
I'm sure you've done due diligence, but I just wanted to remind that our contract with Aramark involves paper goods, and if we're going to go to hand dryers, there should be an appropriate reduction.
That was discussed.
But the other, the other problem, are they paying for the hand dryers? And also, will they be paying to maintain them? Because experience in other school system has shown that they get vandalized and they're expensive to repair. For a pilot project, I'm not sure I would agree with heavily trafficked places in the high school, because when you have a lot of kids who need to get out of the bathroom quickly, they can't be lining up for hand dryers. There's probably a purpose to having paper towels in those areas, so I would probably try it out in a less trafficked area and maybe not the high school.
I did bring up that concern that, you know, that hand drying, using the hand dryers is much slower than using, grabbing a paper towel, so he --
Yeah.
I think we'll have both available, right? Isn't that the plan?
Yeah, I take the, yeah, we're not.
There'll still be paper towels available, so they won't be removed. Do you know what I mean? There won't be just a hand dryer in that area.
Oh.
At this, at this stage.
Sort of defeats the purpose.
No, not really, because if you have a tremendous reduction in the use of the paper because people are using the air, that doesn't defeat the purpose.
Okay, well, I'm in favor of a pilot, but let's see what we could figure out to be the best possible pilot.
Absolutely.
Brett Cooper.
Oh, Brett, sorry.
Did we actually approve the pilot? We were waiting for answers to questions. I don't remember that we actually went.
What was the, what was the question?
The question was, who's paying for it?
Oh, right.
And how it's going to be implemented, and will it reduce our paper good buy that is part of the contract? So if that goes down, do we get a rebate?
Yeah, but I don't think that, I don't think that would, it was my understanding, Dr. Schiff, maybe you can chime in if I'm wrong, that just for this pilot, we weren't going to need those questions answered, but they definitely, before we installed these all over the place, and suddenly they had a sharp reduction in their paper costs, that we'd have to see some of that, too.
But are they paying for the pilot? Is that your understanding? Because I don't think we had that answer.
At this point, Mr. Cooper, I don't, I don't think we're going to move with the pilot until we come back to operations.
Okay.
Because they were, as you said, unanswered questions, so we are not going to move with the pilot until we go back into the Operations Committee so that we'll have answers to that and then we can make a decision.
Okay, that was my understanding, and I just wanted to clarify.
All right, that's fine.
Sorry.
Anyone else? No, no, it's fine. Anyone? Okay, so let's go to comments from the public. We'll start with comments input on the 2018-2019 budget. If you have ideas or comments about where to spend for the 2018-2019 budget, come up to the podium now.
Oh, sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
And I'm here to ask that there be more money put into the budget for lead remediation. I received my child's lead letter from the board last week, and I sent an email to the link that was provided, and I found out that seven sinks at HES have high lead levels. Three of them were identified the previous year, but there are four additional sinks that have high lead levels. And I understand they're shut off now, but this isn't a permanent solution, and I think a significant amount of money needs to go into a more permanent solution. I know that more testing is going to be done, but this is not the time for the second chance learning. Lead is a contaminant, and there is no safe level of lead. I was talking to a lot of parents, and they said to me, "Oh, but 15 parts per billion, that's where there's action level." But that's what the EPA sets. That's just a regulatory measure. So any lead that's present is harming our children, and I think we need to install either, you know, the water bottle fillers that have the lead filters or filters on the actual sink. Because I just wanted to put it in perspective, because the community, to me, doesn't seem very alarmed about this, but the 90th percentile of lead levels in Flint, Michigan, at the height of their crisis, was just under 30 parts per billion. At HES, there's one sink with 55.2 parts per billion. There's another one with 27.6, which is in line with Flint. 43.6 in another sink, and 60.6 parts per billion in another sink. 60.6 is four times the action level that the EPA sets. But again, this is a contaminant, and any amount, even if it's in the nine or 10 range, is too much for our students, and I think more money needs to go into the lead remediation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Kitty Ward, Secretary of Hillsborough Education Association, teacher at Sunnymead. I'm here tonight, I did send a picture to the Board of Ed. If you got, some of you might have gotten a chance to see it, just to give you an idea of what our layout is. But I'm here tonight to add additional parking and a reworking, I guess, and trust me, I don't know what, because I'm not a traffic expert yet. But there is a situation, Sunnymead only has one way in and one way out, and we have a large number of parents who choose to drop their children off, and we are having to kind of police and keep people from pulling into the main drive when buses are present. Buses do start arriving at, you know, somewhere between 8:10, they start unloading at 8:20. And yet, parents are also trying to drop their children off. The far driveway has an in-out, and our principal has put in several procedures this year, and we've changed the procedures as we've tried, as needed, but they, you know, the parents really don't have a lot of places to go. And they are parking on the lawn and walking across the lawn. And again, you know, most people have become good about, we've asked them to walk down to each end so that at least they're walking along the edge of the driveway, because they're walking across the lawn, in between cars, in between buses. Buses, as soon as they unload, they take off to get to the next place. So they're trying to leave while people that are even using the driveway are pulling out and backing up, and people are still walking in, you know, they have a 10-minute window. And there, as I mentioned on the note, there isn't enough parking for even the staff. We have 57 parking spots and 65 staff members, including our three, the child study team when they're there, and they're there not every day, but many days. So staff is parking in So staff is parking in the back, along the driveway, in the, you know, against the building, I guess, if you will, which is not a good idea. So we do have a beautiful front lawn, and I'm not suggesting that we use all of it for parking, but I do think that there is a safety concern, and, you know, we're trying as hard as we can to prevent that from happening, but again, we're, you know, teachers and not traffic officers, so I would like that considered for the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Angela Lugo, Otten Road. I would like to ask the board, I try to get the information, but I would like to ask the board, if anybody knows, how much is allocated to Borough Safe? I know it's volunteer-based, but I would like to know how much is thrown into that program, or how much we have to, you know, develop, or, you know, parents try to get money, is there a number in our budget?
I don't, Mr. Mahmoud?
For Borough Safe?
No, there's, we don't have anything allocated.
Do we not have a line item in the budget for Borough Safe at all?
No. I don't believe so.
No.
So we have no money for suicide prevention in Hillsborough?
I wouldn't say that.
Just, I mean, I understand, we have volunteers who are amazing people, I'm just asking. Do we have a line item for that program at all?
Well, I do want to say, in terms of the investments that we made for suicide prevention, we have counselors in our district, we have a director of counseling is actually here tonight, we have all sorts of programs that we bring in, we train our staff as well.
Okay, so, but we are not allocating any money for Borough Safe at all? I want to be your advocate, I want to help, so I'm just asking, I'm not being insulting, I just want to ask. Is it just volunteer-based, with, we have zero in our budget for Borough Safe?
Please.
Borough Safe is community-based, so it's administrators, teachers, and the community.
Okay.
And as far as I know with this, well, there's no allocation, district allocation, for Borough Safe in the budget.
Okay, well, I just.
That doesn't mean there's not suicide awareness prevention within the curriculum and within the budget, but there is not anything for Borough Safe.
Right, but there's no funds now available for that. So just so that, I'm going to go on record, Angela Lugo, I have a problem with that. We have tragedy that just happened at our sister school, that, when that happened, our kids were getting a text messages from 100 and Central. You have parents here that went to 100 and Central, that are Hillsborough, that our kids were devastated. I am asking you, again, and I sound repetitive, depression and anxiety is running fast and furious. Please, it's not just the flyers, it's not just saying, go to the website. I went to the Borough Safe website, and it's nice, it just says, refer to this phone number. I'm asking you to help our kids, please. I'm asking you, we have children that are eating lunch alone, we have children that don't make the team, we have children that are clinically depressed. I sound like a broken record, and I'm going to come here all the time and not be mean to you guys, but I'm going to say it over and over, please. I will go to the next Borough Safe meeting, I did get a response and said, you're welcome to come to the meeting, but I'm not going to tell parents, refer to the website.
Yeah, I just don't want.
Dr. Schiff, with all due respect, if you find out that a kid in Hillsborough tries to commit suicide, or did, I want you, I want Karen Binger to call and say, hey, are you okay? Do you feel good? I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I do want to also say, to address this lady's concerns, we also have effective school solutions in the high school, the middle school, and ARIS as well, that helps to address mental health supports as well. We make significant investments in making sure that our kids are healthy and safe.
Tony Judas Rivendell-Rood. First, I want to thank Jen, on behalf of us, Jen, you know who we are, for all your time, and even more importantly, for jumping back in, because we need people like you on the board. Two quick things that I heard during the committee meetings that I just, I need clarification from before I even get to my topic. The first one was that, in order to close one building, one school, we have to close them all, did I hear that correctly?
Well, I'll let Dr. Schiff answer, because.
Yeah, it's not, it's difficult, but I want to make, I want to make sure that the public is aware of this. This does not mean we wouldn't close schools when there's excessive heat, and we have done that in the past. So what the board, at this point, has decided, and Mr. Gillette indicated that it would be revisited, is that we're not going to have a particular temperature and heat index that would trigger the early dismissal or the closing of schools.
I thought I heard Mr. Gillette say that because some schools have air conditioning and others don't, we have to side on the side of those that do have air conditioning as opposed to the ones that don't. So I'll give you a quick example that I came up with. Let's say, for example, we had a broken pipe in Sunnymead, and we had to evacuate the school to take care of the broken pipe. Are you telling me we would close the entire district because of that?
No.
So why would we not use that same policy for excessive heat?
Well, we have, actually. We have closed schools individually, we've had, over the, I guess it was maybe five years ago, we closed Wood Fern, and we had to keep the rest of the district open. So, you know, we look at the times that we're able to do those type of decisions, and we act in a flexible way versus, this is the policy, and we're going to close schools for half the day. So, you know, these are not simple decisions to make when we have excessive heat, but we will close if we need to close. If I can, if I can keep some of the schools open, we'll try to keep some of the schools open, but it's not, it's not easy, it gets complex pretty quickly.
I understand. And then the only other comment I had is, for anyone who's ever gone to a Major League Baseball game, or in an airport, and gone into a restroom, the hand dryers can service many, many people in a short period of time, so I hope we don't not put in a pilot program because we're concerned kids can't get in and out of the bathroom quick enough, just a comment. Last week I was here, I had asked the board a question with regard to whether or not the athletic department has an exclusive contract for apparel with Nike. I was told someone would get back to me. I haven't heard, so I figured I'd bring it up again tonight.
Mr. Mahmoud is here this evening, so he has an answer for you.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening. You had mentioned, I think, at the last meeting, we do not have any exclusive contract with Nike, nor do we have any arrangement with Nike.
Okay, thank you. So then, can I assume or presume that if booster clubs were being sent to a Nike vendor because we are a Nike school, that that would be against the policy for contracts in our district?
So I guess you're, if the booster club is tagging on our tax-exempt ID, as an organization, we have a tax-exempt ID, we are required, under that tax-exempt ID, to follow the public school contracts law, which means we would have to be competitive, and we'd have to find the most competitive pricing for the school district. So the answer to your question is, if anything is tied to our tax-exempt ID, we would be required to go through the competitive process. So the board wouldn't necessarily commit to any particular vendor, because that's not a competitive process. We'd go out and do our diligence and make sure that we are finding what's best for the taxpayer money that we'd be spending.
Okay, I understand. So that if an administrator in the district was sending booster clubs to a particular Nike vendor, that probably would not be within the contract law or the bidding process? Is that fair to say?
That is fair to say, if you, if that account is not tied to our tax-exempt ID. So if the booster club has a separate account that's not tied to it, that is an independent decision, but I would say that it's highly recommended that, whether it's a booster club or not, that we don't have exclusive contracts with vendors, that we are competitive, and that we do the best we can to get the best for our money, and not be tied to one vendor.
I agree with that. I'm just not sure that that's being followed within the district. If I was to go about trying to find out what companies the athletic department uses for apparel, and if the bidding process was being used, how would I go about that?
So we, if you were looking for, like, a report, we certainly have all the reports to the vendors that we use. As far as the competitive bidding process, we do have a procurement department that exclusively works with all departments throughout the school district. So, you know, if, we can certainly share with you all the vendors that are run through the athletic department, that is open public record. And then, a tie to that, our purchasing department looks for thresholds. So if we exceed, like, a quote threshold, because there are things we can buy with several quotes, and there are things we have to go out to bid. So the purchasing department is responsible for maintaining that, of course, with the oversight of the business administrator, but as far as looking at the vendors, every possible vendor that the school district has dealt with in the athletic department that we can provide you, and as far as even showing you what we spent with particular vendors, so that is available to you, if you like it, and the process in which we control it is done through procurement.
Thank you. There was an article in the paper this past weekend with regard to an investigation that's ongoing at the high school, where it was quoted that Dr., it wasn't quoted, but it said that Dr. Schiff had asked for Hillsborough Police Department involvement. Can the board confirm that?
Well, we can't comment on that at all, I'm sorry.
Can the board confirm whether or not the information was inaccurately put into the paper?
No, we can't make a comment on that. When we say, when I say we can't make a comment on that, what we're doing is, we're protecting the public when we say that. We're protecting the public.
I have several more questions.
I hope you understand that.
I took the hard, what our attorney said last week, that perhaps if the question was posed differently, I might get, you might get an answer, so, you know, I am an attorney, so I'm going to try to pose some questions generally, to see if the public could get some answers, so.
I understand.
The fact that it may have been moved to the Hillsborough Police Department, generally speaking, if that was to happen, does that mean that the investigation at the high school is completed?
I'm going to ask our attorney to speak to this.
So, once again, I think, I don't know if I responded to you, Mr. Judas, or if it was somebody else who asked a question, but when it comes to personnel matters, we're not going to be commenting on any of those, we can't, due to the confidentiality that is owed to the employees, so anything that involves what you're referring to in the paper, we can't comment on. Again, I understand that the public wants to know certain information, but we're restricted as to what we can say and can't say, and I can't give you a more satisfactory response.
Let me see if I can ask it in general terms. When does?
I can tell you, I can tell you that anything that might be related to a personnel issue, we're going to give the same response, regardless of how the question is asked. I'm not trying to be difficult, that's the restrictions that we have placed upon us.
I understand that. So at what point does it cease becoming a personnel issue?
I can't say that we have a time limit that I can put on that at this point in time.
So conceivably, the board could never address this issue, and that person or that investigation can continue to be ongoing for, let's just say, several years on administrative paved leave, is that fair to say?
I don't know, first of all, with regard to a personnel issue, I can't comment on that specific issue. With regard to a general aspect about personnel issues in general, and whether or not people can be on a leave of absence, or whatever the case may be, that could be any length of time. I can't specify when that could be.
Generally speaking, at any point, does the board have to come forward to the public with a recommendation as to what will transpire? For example, generally, again, we know previously, not this board, but a previous board, had accepted the resignation of a principal, and allowed that principal, despite some problems he was having, to keep his pension. I'm assuming that none of that was ever made public till, well, after the fact. Is there any guidance the board can give us, if something like that is about to happen, so that we can have input on, so you can understand what the public's feeling would be on that?
There's not a specific mechanism with, and again, not addressing a specific personnel issue, but just in terms of the concept of whether or not an employee who resigns can keep their pension or not, that's something that is wholly outside the control of the Board of Education. That's meant, that's administered by the Division of Pensions and Benefits in New Jersey, and, excuse me, and they can make determinations as to whether or not someone can get a pension or not, whether they can lose their pension, so forth and so on, it's, that's out of our hands when an employee resigns.
I understand. Being a newbie at this, I do understand that either the superintendent or the Board of Ed can bring what's called tenure charges against particular people if they believe something went on that would lead them to want to terminate an employee, is that fair to say?
If there is, from a general standpoint, if there is an employee that the board believes has engaged in conduct unbecoming, or insubordination, there's a variety of legal factors, or other just cause.
Right, a couple ineffective, parts ineffective, I understand.
The board can determine to bring tenure charges against that employee, that's the only way you can remove a tenured employee.
And then finally, I'm sorry I'm taking so long, since the last meeting, many people, or at least a lot of people, have come up to me with what they consider examples of things that perhaps the board and/or whoever the board has retained to investigate. Is there a board point person, or someone that they could go to in confidence, and perhaps give the information to the board? Because I have to assume that the board wants to do a complete investigation to ensure they have all the information in front of them.
So from a general standpoint, anytime there are issues that are a matter of concern with regard, whether it's with regard to employees, whether it's with regard to students, policies of the board, that should be addressed at the lowest level possible. So oftentimes, that might be, might be a teacher or building principal, but depending upon the nature of the issue, it might also be to the business administrator or the superintendent as the first stop. So if there are concerns that members of the public have, that they want to advise the board of, then it would go through, depending upon the level, either building level or the central office administration, so that's who it should be referred to. And just like if a board member received a complaint about, about something going on in the school generally, the board member's responsibility is to refer that complaint to the superintendent, so that's ultimately where it would go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lorraine, okay, Lorraine.
Mr. Judas.
One second, Lisa.
From up here. I just wanted to address the Nike issue, because I have ordered apparel for some of our teams. And you might not be aware, so I just wanted to inform you, as you go forward with your process, that a number of years ago, before my kids were playing any sports for the middle school or the high school, we changed our colors from maroon to cardinal. And when I started purchasing some booster club items for the swim team, I was informed by the coach that the only color that has a match, the only company that has a match for our cardinal is Nike, so he preferred that we went to Nike. I just wanted to, in case you didn't know that, I just wanted to inform you of that. I am not saying anything besides giving you that information, that the cardinal color is the Nike cardinal color.
I appreciate that. I've had a different experience, I know others have had a different experience, with regard to recommendations versus you must.
Right.
So, thank you very much.
And I'm not saying anything about that, I just wanted to let you know my experience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sasan. Lisa?
Hi, Lisa Gulla, Bigley Road, Hillsborough, also a member of the Hillsborough Millstone Municipal Alliance. And this time I brought notes, but it's really short still. Just a couple of things I wanted to comment on for the budget. Two recommendations, I think I can fairly confidently speak on behalf of the Municipal Alliance and a parent. I know we mentioned it at the last meeting, we would highly recommend, especially in light of the policy changes and the strong moving forward that the board is taking, to really consider adding. to really consider adding additional sacks across the district. I think that's-
Thank you.
I think that's important to address a number of our issues, our mental health issues, our substance abuse issues, all across the board. The other component, on the prevention end, because that's the early intervention and potentially treatment end of the spectrum. On the prevention end of the spectrum, I did want to also mention Mindemagio. I know Kelly Vilano mentioned her last time. She is a part-time, three-quarter time person, and she really works probably double full-time, not only with the municipal alliance, with Borough Safe, with her life skills program. So, I would really like to see her become full-time, and I guarantee the board will see a huge return on investment. I think she'll still work way beyond her full-time hours as she does. So, that's another component for the budget that I would like to really see considered. And I'm assuming I can say one more thing, which is the next part, but in regards to the passive alcohol sensor device, I did have one quick question. I know there were a couple of tweaks made to it. My only concern in reading it is there was a component that was taking, taken out so that it says students. I want to clarify, is that going to be just Hillsborough students, or all students that attend extracurricular activities? That's my only concern now in the new policy revision.
Sure. We actually had that discussion about whether or not, say, the, you know, the kids go into the prom, that you may have a student who's not one of our students, and whether or not administration wants to reserve the right to wand during, during that when they come on in. So, there was, there was intent to make it ambiguous on it at this point, but as we put together the administrative processes in order to make that, that work, we'll be making those decisions.
Okay. And again, then in that part, I would then strongly recommend that it is all students, especially we have our extracurricular activities besides just the prom. I know we discussed this a little bit, football games. I know there's a lot of logistics that are going to go into it, but any of the sports, any of the events, any of the dances, I think it should be across the board, all the students, because as we've heard, it's pervasive. So, it should be across the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay. Let me ask for any public input for items on tonight's action agenda, other than what we already heard. Or it could be what we already heard, but from different people. Or new business. Now's your chance. Well, there'll be another public portion towards the end of the meeting. But new business could be the students, yeah, you guys standing up. That's for you. Absolutely.
All right. Hello, everyone. Hi, good evening. My name is Dan Lee, and I'm here representing Team 75, the Hillsborough Robo Raiders. So, I'm here to give a recap of last month and to tell you how we're proceeding for next month. Yes, January. So, last month, so last month, our big event was Robo Blast in November, and that went very successful. We had 26 teams attend, which equated to a total of 260 students who were interested in STEM, and we furthered their interest along by showing them what the high school competition is. They participated in three rounds of competition that lasted 10 hours in total. And furthermore, we had a fundraiser at Applebee's which helped us, helped us raise money. Looking forward for next month, January, we have our kickoff. So, for our robotics competition, the game or the competition is released, and we have a day where we watch the video, and we strategize, and we make a plan on how we want to proceed. Kickoff is open to everyone, so you all are invited to attend. It's at the high school, and it's on the first Saturday. Yes, we've sent out emails inviting the board members, and I'm happy to see that many of you guys will be attending, and I would be interested in having all of you guys attend. That's about it. Thank you for your time. Have a nice night.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the invitation, also. Seeing no other public comments on action agenda or new business, let's go to the, our action agenda. I think so, right?
Very good.
Yes.
All right. So, Dr. Schiff, I'll hand it over to you for the action agenda.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education, to approve travel and related expenses, to approve the HIBLIS, new course proposal, graphic arts curriculum revision, and name change with revised curriculum. Also to approve the overnight trips, field trip destinations, family math sessions as listed, and the approval of the policies for second reading, including administering an opioid antidote, substance abuse, passive breath alcohol sensor device, and transgender students.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion for the education agenda items? Done? Okay, seeing none, let's have a roll call.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Swasan?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Dr. Schiff, HR?
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm making under the area of human resources, to approve the resolution to create one full-time instructional assistant for IEP needs, to approve short-term administrative vacancy, approve retirements and resignations as listed, to approve revised leaves of absences. Motion also to approve revised long-term substitutes, and the appointments of long-term substitutes and substitutes as attached. Also approve the preapproval of extra period coverage, as well as extra period coverage.
Motion?
So moved.
Second? Oh, Lorraine.
Yes.
Uh, discussion?
Can we separate item 10.2, please?
10.2, Mr. Lorraine.
Got it. Got it, sir.
Any other discussion? Okay, so let's have a roll call on 10.1 through 10.6 excluding 10.2.
You got it.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Swasan?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, let's entertain 10.2.
So moved.
Second.
Got it.
Discussion. Yes.
Dr. Schiff, I actually just have a question as to why there's a specific period. I usually don't recall us ever saying a specific amount of time that someone's being appointed, and it's by stipend.
It's actually within the HPSA contract that we're able to do this. Under a 20-day rule, after 20 days, then they receive this particular stipend for that period of time.
Okay, thank you.
For the next, for the next 24 days.
For the next 24.
So, it's 20, then 24, then something else has to happen. So, we're in that second time period now.
Okay, thank you.
On the 45th day, something else happens. Okay? So, any other discussion? Okay, roll call for 10.2.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Swasan?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Schiff, operation.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to approve monthly bills list, non-anim transfers, approve fund 40 amendment, and to accept the donation by Duke's Farm Foundation in lieu of reduced taxes in the amount of over $51,000. And also to accept a resignation of Tom Kest.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
There you go, Brett and Lorraine. Any discussion?
Can we separate item 11.4, please?
Yep. 11.4, separate it out. Any other discussion? Okay, so let's, let's vote on 11.1 through 11.5 excluding 11.4. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Dr. Swasan?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, 11.4, anyone?
So moved.
Second.
There we go.
There we go. Got it.
Discussion. Yes.
Well, first of all, this was something that we normally don't see, is that kind of a donation back to us. So, just thank you to the Duke's Farm Foundation, because that's amazing, that they're giving us $51,000. But-
They, yes, they, when, when the, when their taxes were reduced in, I guess, 2016, they committed to paying, continuing to pay what they would have paid in taxes up through 2020. So, I'm glad they're, I'm, they said it, I'm glad they're doing it, what they said they did.
Yes, no, it's amazing, so.
They don't have to do it.
Given the climate of the past few board meetings with parents coming up, and the emails we've also received with regard to programs for drugs, and counseling, and other things, I hope that now the public also sees that the Board of Education just received $51,000 in a donation, and to my knowledge, I don't think it's accounted for, they haven't really decided how to spend it yet. So, that might be just one way that we can do that.
Absolutely. Other, further discussion? I saw someone's hand go up there. Any other? All right, so let's, Judy, I see your fingers raising up there.
Yeah, I wonder how that number was calculated?
Uh, it's, yeah, did they, and then, in their letter, which was the attachment, I think they described how it was calculated. I don't have the letter open.
Yeah, I don't know. Do we have that?
It's, 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 it's Duke Farm Foundation donation letter, donated, dated 12/4/17. It's the difference in the amount of taxes that they would have paid in a base year, the year when they were paying the higher amount, and what they are paying now. But they owe to the school district now.
Because of the demolition of the house.
Yes.
Their taxes went down.
That was, that was, that was a major part of their, of their tax base.
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Haas, do you understand?
Talk about it another time.
Okay, you can talk about it now, now?
It's all right.
Okay. Let's have a roll call for 11.4.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes, and thank you.
Dr. Swasan?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We also had, for informational, we have the suspension report. I hope you'll review that. Also, there was one HIV case that we had to review. Now, we're back up to the public for comments from the public on old business. You can come up now if you have any other comments. This is your final chance to speak at tonight's meeting from the public. Are we adjourned?
Kelly Vilano, 87 Meadowbrook. First of all, I want to say thank you to the administration for bringing that program to the 11th graders last week. My daughter was a part of that, and it was an excellent educational piece for the students. I don't have anything written tonight, but I really have a few things to say. So, I'm curious to know if we do know the number of drug testing that has been done to date.
We do. Dr. Antunes?
64.
64.
64.
So, we're, we're actually on pace to meeting the 10%, what's in the regulations.
So, that's 10% of 600?
The entire, yeah, the entire population that is the pool of children who are in, who are in those extracurricular activities, athletics, as well as parking. It's about 1,800 students.
Okay. I'll let somebody else figure out that math for right now. Okay, so I have a couple of questions, actually. One of them is really, it's, it's a comment, and then it's a question. So, in Hillsborough, my understanding is that we really don't grade homework anymore, and that's not factored into a student's grade. Part of the reason that's not factored into a student's grade is because parents were told at back-to-school nights, or other various things like that, that the reasoning was that students did not all come from the same demographic background. So, to factor homework into a grade would be unfair to some students. The reason that I'm bringing this up is because last week I had asked, and I had also sent a letter to the board this week, to really consider doing something about educating the parents in terms of prevention, abuse, and signs. So, I guess I'm really kind of thinking about it in this way. I've had a lot of people have said to me, you know, parents really need to take care of this at home. It's the parental responsibility. Well, for as long as I can remember, schools kind of have that responsibility as well, in terms of educating our students. But this is a prime example of why we need to educate parents, because not all students come from parents who understand what is happening in, in today's world. So, I would really ask you to consider some of those programs, and maybe some of that $51,000-plus dollars could go into educating parents. When Mrs. Haas said that perhaps the computer screens would open up to some kind of a prevention or signs, I thought that was an excellent idea. I'd like to know if anyone has looked into the program hidden in plain sight.
Hidden in plain sight?
Right.
Yeah, so we, we referred that, we're absolutely taking a look at that.
Excellent. Okay. My other question is that I was curious to know, I'm excited to hear that we're doing more random drug testing, and I do know that having the nurses there can be one of the barriers. I actually have two questions. Where or why would we have to do the random drug testing after hours? Like, where would, is that what you had said earlier?
No, that, that the after hours, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that had nothing to do with the random drug testing. That had to do with the increased students that we might need to send for drug testing due to the vaping policy, and the passive wanding, and other policies that were enacted. Nothing to do with random.
Okay.
It would be done because it, it's enforced also at after-school activities as well. So, if a child has a vaping device after school, we'll need to make sure that they get, that they get tested, and that we have hospitals that are willing to work with us on that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Additionally, I had one other, actually two other questions. One of the things that children are taught oftentimes, especially in our school district, is to teach our kids to be upstanders, right? Say, see something, say something, to be an upstander. But unfortunately, we don't necessarily encourage that as they go through the grades. I actually have an email from Mr. Gillette in where I had asked him about, in speaking about some of the possible drug issues, and kids seeing things happening on buses or wherever. And what he wrote to me was this, "I know this is, I personally met with Dr. Schiff last week specifically on this issue. This is a few weeks old. I know this is hard, and I cannot offer my own children as examples, as they, like most teens, do not want to get involved by ratting out other students. But please encourage your children to tell the names of the students who are distributing substances." If you're not gonna tell your kids to do it, I certainly am not gonna tell my kids to do it.
No, I've told my kids to do it. Have you told yours? I've told mine.
I absolutely tell my children to talk to me about it, but I find this email a little bit offensive in that terms. What I'd like to suggest is that Central Bucks County in Pennsylvania has a program that is for their students, and it's an anonymous reporting system, where kids can anonymously report other students if need be. And that has, that significantly decreased some of the problems that they were seeing in our school district. At the night of conversation, the prosecutor talked to us about a Stop It app that a lot of people put onto their phones. So, maybe the Stop It app could also be another tool that we could share with our students. tool that we could share with our students. And then, uh, finally, I just wanted to ask one final question about the ESS program. I know that the ESS program is here in Otten Road, and so it's also at the middle school and the high school. Do you know how many students that that program services?
Um, I, I don't know exactly, but it's probably in the range of, of, um, 16 students at any one time at the high school, and somewhat less, and kids rotate in and out of the program, and somewhat less at the other schools.
So in terms of rotating in and out, is there, are there criteria for students to get in and out of those programs?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the reason I ask is because I know that, um, at Otten Road, that the students that are in the ESS program, there was a student that was desperately trying to get in, and, um, there, this building services nine students, and that's at its maximum capacity is nine students. So those nine students who do have, um, you know, mental health types of issues, that works for nine students in a building of 1,200 students. So in considering budget for this building, if you could please consider another SAC counselor, especially, we don't have one here, that would be excellent. And again, those nine students, they spend an awful lot of time at ESS, but, um, you know, we have a lot more than nine students who do have some things to talk about. Thank you.
Jane Stotts, Devonshire Court. Um, I'm here to talk about the various issues regarding drug and alcohol abuse that have come up today, as well as past meetings. Um, I'm here as a community member. I'm also a retired teacher. I'm also a parent. Um, but as a teacher, one of my concerns is that, uh, some teachers have said that, um, they have reported vaping, along with other disciplinary, uh, concerns, and, um, oftentimes, nothing happens. So they're concerned that they're not being supported. Um, whether it's, uh, misperception on their part or not, uh, that might need to be addressed so that, uh, teachers will follow through and, and report instances of vaping that they will be seeing.
Yep. We're actually, Jane, if I could just interrupt you. We actually have a faculty meeting tomorrow to discuss this very issue. The changes are, are significant in terms of how we're going to be addressing vaping. So all, all teachers, and absolutely will be, um, strongly encouraged that if you see it, report it, and that we will take the next steps administratively.
Well, that leads right up to my next point question. Um, are teachers going to be getting any kind of, uh, training regarding all the paraphernalia related to vaping?
Yes.
Because I know some of them that I've talked to are not familiar with it. Through no fault of their own, but it really, and will it just be through a faculty meeting?
Yeah, there's going to be, um, both notification as well as education to make sure that teachers understand what to look for and, and those type of things. And, um, I spoke with the principal, actually today, about that very issue to make sure that, um, that it's well communicated for, for teachers and staff. I have to tell you that the technology is changing very, very rapidly with these devices. What was available last year is different than, than now what's available this year. What's going to be available next year is probably going to be different as well. So it's going to require, um, updates and, and opportunities to talk directly with teachers about what these devices look like.
Will they be getting any kind of in-service training? I saw on the calendar, I don't think there's going to be one until the spring. But will there be more intensive training?
There, there may be more things coming up, but we needed to make sure the teachers are aware of it in anticipation that the board just approved the change in the policy. So we wanted to move quickly.
Oh, sure, yeah, definitely, we, as soon as possible, but, um, also maybe more intensive training as well.
Yeah, if it, if it's necessary, absolutely.
Um, also, um, in, in considering all these concerns, um, I've been doing some research, and almost every study I've, I read about emphasizes how important it is to have a positive climate. Um, and all, all these actions that we're taking, of course, are very important. In fact, that's what a lot of this is about. It's, there's no one magic solution to this, and there's no one area, no one set of people that can solve this. But the positive school climate is, that kept coming up, and, um, it's not easily solved. Um, uh, but I, I, I know, uh, last week, uh, Mr. Fenster suggested that if we could have stipends for teachers that are voluntarily advising clubs, um, because if we have kids involved in, uh, productive activities, that's a great way of promoting a positive school climate. Um, also, so that kids can stay after, we, it'd be nice if we could reinstate the, the late bus.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, and, and I know, and I know there are logistics involved in, in, in any of these suggestions, um, but we're not talking about, eh, okay, alright, so maybe they won't be able to, you know, play chess, whatever. It's, it's really bigger than that. Um, and just, and, and last week, um, Ms. Rose suggested, you know, uh, teachers should be more, uh, involved with making connections with kids. And as a former teacher, I immediately thought, "How dare she suggest that?" And I was, I, I was on the defensive, but it was a great suggestion. Yes, teachers, speaking for myself, and a lot of other teachers that are, I, uh, still friends with, that are still teaching, um, they really do work hard at making connections. But if we can still, you know, kick it up a notch and, and try even harder, and, and using suggestions that Ashley has made, uh, Ms. Rose has made, as far as, you know, greeting kids at the door, or just really going out of our way, or any of these suggestions that can create a positive school climate, would, that would be great. Um, but we also, as, uh, Ms. Valano said earlier, we need to educate the parents, and we need, the municipal alliance does a great job, but a lot of times, we're really preaching to the choir. We have people coming out that are already really convinced that, "Yeah, I really want to help my child." But, um, we need a captive audience. We need, we need them, and I really think, no matter what is getting in the way, if we can hold some sort of train, uh, like, maybe 15 minutes, hitting some really important points at back-to-school nights at, at the middle school and at the high school. Um, somebody said that had happened a few years ago, and there was pushback. Oh, well, too bad. I'm, uh, get over it and, uh, just deal with people being upset by that. And by the same token, um, as parents, you know, I gotta say, I'm lucky. I have no problems with my son, he's now 29, no, no problems, and as, not because I'm a good parent, not because he's a good kid, which we are respectively. Um, it's just, it's, it's luck. There are all kinds of parents, all kinds of, of kids that, um, become victim to, uh, drug and alcohol abuse. I've had two former students that have died as a result of it. Um, and they were wonderful people. Their parents were wonderful people. Um, so, what we need to do is provide tools and information for parents, because a lot of them might be thinking, "It's not going to happen to me," and it, you don't know. Um, also, give parents the strength and the information to be the bad guy in their house. Some of them don't want to be the bad guy, and, uh, you know, be all over their face and, and, you know, checking out their social media and, and, uh, checking out their, their rooms, like in plain sight, hidden in plain sight, you know, that kind of thing. Um, but we have to provide them the materials for that, and, and something like, uh, presentations back-to-school night would, would really help, I think, and, uh, would, would, um, hit a big audience. Um, but I want to encourage people not to be resistant to whatever suggestions that might hit home personally, because this is a serious, serious problem. It takes a whole community, it really does take a village. It's not just the schools, it's not just the parents. And it's, it's me as a community member. Um, just this past summer, I heard a conversation at a party where two adults were talking about, "Yeah, I think it's fine to have, uh, to host a party for, uh, my high school kids and their friends to have alcohol." And I didn't say anything, and I was wrong. And it's, because I felt uncomfortable. But we're going to have to work past that discomfort for the sake of, well, do I want to feel, am I worried about feeling uncomfortable, or is this for the sake of our children's health and wellbeing and life? So, thank you, and I think it's so important that we all collaborate, and that you have been listening, you have been responding, you have been modifying policies, and, uh, I hope we can continue to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Alina Misari, Hillsborough Education Association, second vice president at Hillsborough High School. I just wanted to take, uh, the time to highlight some things that have been going on in our school buildings, um, along with our students and staff. Uh, please forgive me, there's quite a few things, as I was unable to be at the last two meetings. Uh, first, Kim Maldonov, if I'm saying that wrong, I apologize, at Triangle, has been collecting gifts for 11 needy families at Triangle. She organizes, wraps, and distributes the presents to all, and we certainly appreciate her efforts. A group of teachers, both current and retired, led by Deb Bama Wala at Triangle, visited Foothill Acres Nursing Home in the fall for Halloween, and again on December 12th for Christmas, to entertain and visit with the residents. They also have adopted seven grandparents, for whom many staff members have been purchasing holiday gifts, and in addition, the students have been making holiday cards as well. Students at Otten Road participated in the Hoops for Heart program, raising over $17,000 for the American Heart Association. Otten Road students are currently teaming up with the United States Marine Corps Reserve in collecting Toys for Tots. Students are bringing in new unwrapped toys for kids who are less fortunate. A special thanks goes to Silvia Scazari for submitting this report. Sunny Mead School recently held a fundraising craft night event. The staff came up with a variety of crafts that the students can make. In addition, they played a variety of games, listened to holiday music, and sold hot chocolate. All money raised went to the benevolent fund. The school nurse will then use this money to give back to our families in need, so they have a brighter holiday season. This year, over $1,600 was raised. A special thanks to Carolyn Petty for submitting this report. Our Transportation Department had its annual food drive ending on, um, December 14th for the Hillsborough Food Bank, and a special thanks to Beth Pierzanti for submitting this report. Our fourth grade students and teachers at Sunny Mead Elementary volunteered to make table centerpieces, provide plastic wrap, and plastic ware to serve this year's Thanksgiving dinner at Elijah's Promise, located in New Brunswick. In addition, fourth grade students and teachers are collecting holiday gifts for the children of the Agape House in Somerville. Each student will purchase a gift on a child's wish list, wrap it, and help in loading up the van, which will be delivered prior to the holiday. A special thanks to Robin DeVincentis for submitting this report. Hillsborough Middle School is working with the Hillsborough Rescue Squad to offer seventh and eighth graders certification in heart-saver adult and child CPR, as well as AED. As of November 15th, over 250 students had signed up to participate in the courses, and 50 have been certified so far.
Ah.
A special thanks to Gina Kay for submitting this report. And last but not least, a special thank to Barbara Vitanza of, uh, Amsterdam, who's been volunteering regularly at the Somerset Animal Shelter. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to highlight what's going on in our district, and best wishes for a happy holiday.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Why is he coming in?
Good evening. Jamie Moore, Atkinson Circle. Um, quick question, looking for an update. Maybe Mr. Volpe can help us, uh, on the hiring of a girls' lacrosse coach? Any status changes?
You can answer from there, Mike. I'll, I'll give you permission.
We have several openings, and we feel we're close on, uh, three or four openings. It should be happening, I'm anticipating on one of the January events.
If I could just repeat it into the record, Mr. Volpe, just say a little bit louder.
Yeah, I have, we have four openings, I'm anticipating on three of those four openings are on one of the January events, including the head coach.
Thank you.
Okay. What are the, there's two meetings in January?
Yes.
The eighth, and what's the other?
Haven't, haven't decided that yet.
Well, we haven't officially made the calendar. It would be nominally the 22nd, because we, we don't generally do back-to-back meetings, but we, we won't decide that, so thanks, next month.
Okay. Um, I'd just like to make a request, if I could to...
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, this month.
That's, one is a holiday, correct? Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Moore.
What were the dates?
Oh, so, Mrs. Haas, did you have a clarification on the dates for next year that you wanted to make?
We haven't designed them.
Just, just that the 15th is Martin Luther King's birthday, and it will be close.
So, so, most likely.
We'll have the reorg on the 8th, and 14 days later, we'll have the second meeting.
Right. Pretty sure that'll be the 22nd, because it's the 15th holiday.
Pretty sure.
I believe the spring season starts beginning of March. I think we've known that this position has been open for six months. The boys' position has been filled. This, to me, is, I know it's being addressed, and that's great. Hopefully by January 8th, we have an appointment, so that that coach can begin to get to know their seniors, the girls that are going to be on the team in the spring. Um, this is a competitive disadvantage, okay? We have a, a brand-new system coming in, and when you only give them six weeks to get to know their people, to try to implement their philosophies, and how they're going to run the program, and get the girls to begin working, it's not enough. You put yourself behind. We saw that last year with soccer, okay? You don't, it's not fair to the coaches, it's not fair to the student athletes, and we need, I would ask, for everyone involved to make that a priority, to get that person appointed. We have four positions open, I don't know what the other positions are, if they're assistant coaches, but if they're spring sports, this needs to be taken care of, should have been taken care of, should have been done, just like the boys' program has been filled, uh, over a month ago. And they're working, and the coach is working. Um, we're just hurting ourselves here, and that's not fair to our student athletes, um, who've probably been playing this sport since they were six years old and looking forward to their high school careers. It's not fair for them to have to go out like this. And, um, you know, it's happened before, and that's unfortunate, okay? Um, so I just please ask everyone involved to really make a, a, a huge effort to get this person appointed, so they can begin working by that first meeting in January. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Um, second item. I sent an email today to, with a picture of a filtered drinking station. I was in three schools in the last five days, and every one of them had those filtered, fillable drinking stations in the school. And that includes high schools, elementary schools, and middle schools. Uh, just part of my travels of following my kids through their basketball games. Um, and just couldn't help notice, walking down each of these schools in different, uh, townships, they all had filtered, fillable drinking stations, multiple, in, in the schools. And, um, you know, I, with the problems that we're having with lead, public drinking water in general isn't that good. Um, God knows what's in that, you know, so filtered water is the standard today, uh, for drinking, and that should be in each and every one of our schools, because having kids properly hydrated is very, very important, and adults as well. I mean, everyone should be drinking their fill of water every day, that's a scientific fact, uh, to enhance overall performance and, uh, uh, you know, day-to-day activities. So, uh, if we could make that, and maybe we have $51,000 we just found, that we could spend on some drinkable water filters, um, while we're spending money. Quick question on policy. Does the board, do we have a school policy regarding usage of cell phones in our schools?
Yes.
Someone's got a cellphone policy for staff and students?
Yeah.
Do you want to share?
I, I have to look for it.
We do have, we do have a policy for staff and students.
Can you tell us what that is?
Yeah, Dr. Antunes is going to look it up real quick.
Do you have something else in the meantime?
I mean, after attending last, uh, the meeting last week, and hearing all the problems and the need for advisors and, and nurses, and, you know, we have drug testing, we have, uh, bullying policies, we have all these issues, spike in addictions, a spike, you want to talk about an addiction? Look at our society. Want to talk about an addiction? I tell my kids, "This is your first addiction," okay? Because you can't let it go. And I watch their friends, and I watch how they interact with these things, and I know that kids are using these things all day long, school. They're using them. And teachers are as well, okay? Everyone's guilty. Everyone's guilty of driving and texting, everyone's guilty, all right, of, of using the phones when they're not supposed to be. And we've all seen the family that goes out to dinner, and all of them are sitting there staring at their phones, and how sad that is, okay? that kids are using these things all day long, school. They're using them. And teachers are as well, okay? Everyone's guilty. Everyone's guilty of driving and texting, everyone's guilty, all right, of using the phones when they're not supposed to be. And we've all seen the family that goes out to dinner, and all of them are sitting there staring at their phones and how sad that is, okay? To make, there was a report on TV about the correlation between social media, these phones, and the spike in so many different problems in our society, one of them being depression, anxiety, stress, okay? Here's, to me, this is your biggest problem right here, okay? This is your biggest problem. If we could break our kids away from these things and interact as human beings and not through a device, not through some social media, I think that would be a big step in the right direction for Hillsborough Township. I know we would be a pioneer. I know parents out there that have a hard time and have policies in their home of breaking kids away from their phones, and how hard they have to fight their kids over it, okay? But this might be something, you can tell me about the policy now, if we have a policy that it's heavily enforced, and maybe even turn these things off for five, six hours a day.
So I'm going to ask Dr. Intus if she could say something about it, but I'm sure it's a long policy.
It's 5516, Use of Electronic Communication and Recording Devices, and it's a two-page policy, but it does define electronic communication and recording device includes any device with the capability to audio or video record, or is capable of receiving or transmitting any type of communication between persons. An ECRD includes, but is not limited to cameras, cellular and wireless telephones, pagers, beepers, laptop computers, electronic readers, personal digital assistants, two-way radios, portable fax machines, video broadcasting devices, and any other device that allows a person to record and/or transmit on either a real-time or delayed basis, sound, video, or still images, texts, or other information. And then it talks about that a pupil is not permitted to have it turned on or use it during school grounds, during the school day, or when they're participating in a curricular...
Not allowed to use it during a school day, is that what you just said?
During the school, the policy says, a pupil is not permitted to have turned on or use an ECRD on school grounds during the school day, or when the pupil is participating in a curricular or school-sponsored co-curricular activity. And then it talks about emergency situations, and perhaps people who are on volunteer fire company and things like that. So it is 5516.
Great. Thank you very much. I think that needs some enforcement because I don't believe that that is being enforced. And I've heard stories of even, not only students, I know the students are using it. You could text your kid any time of the day, you'll get a response. But teachers, you know, we're using, we got a great technology platform, but it comes with its dangers. Dangers, our teachers just say, "Go look at that, I'm going to sit over here and play on my Facebook account," okay? You know, so it affects everyone in the schools, and I would just, you know, there's a way to, when I walk into one of our schools, this thing searches for the, I get an indicator that the Wi-Fi, or I have access to it, or somehow sign in. I'm sure you have the ability to put these things on airplane mode, or turn off the data, or disconnect their ability to function with data and cellular service. And that's something that, you know, I think we do our kids a big service, to break them away from these things on a daily basis for a little bit, because it is amazing, amazing, from the time they wake up to the time they go to bed. And I got three children. My kids are just as guilty how much time their eyes are focused on this thing, and it's a problem. And that's what's leading to a lot of the things with the stress, the anxiety. I mean, it's being proven, amongst other things, in our society. There's good, but there's also, you know, the flip side. So something to consider for enforcement and, you know, looking further into that as a possible way to just break kids away a little bit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Riley, 790 Route 206. Just a question for Mr. Gillette. Moving forward, this board seat that's empty, what, moving forward, what's the timeline?
We're going to, Mr. Mahmood sent me some documents today, this afternoon, three documents that we need to take a look at. We're going to send those out to board members tomorrow morning. I anticipate that we're going to interview and appoint someone at the second meeting in January.
Excellent.
That's my anticipation. I think that's what's going to be.
A lot of important issues. I hope you'd fill it as quick as possible.
Yeah.
My other question, and I know everybody, you know, it's a volunteer position, and everybody is doing the best they can, but is there a policy on maybe not making enough meetings or not being here? I understand everybody has problems and issues and things going on in their lives, but I've been to the last six board meetings, and some board members are, just seem like they're not here anymore. And I, there's a lot of good things you guys are doing, and going to have to vote on, and you know, the budget's coming up, and I'm just curious, is there ever a point where...
There are policies, one of our bylaws, I think, addresses board member absences. I don't, I can't quote from it right now. I know if a board member misses, I believe it's three consecutive meetings, then by a vote of the board, they can be removed from their seat. It's a little more, there's a little more to it than that, that there has to be some notice.
I'm not even saying remove. Maybe you as president have, or the next president, just having a heart-to-heart with the person. Maybe they just, you know, just can't, I mean, I know sometimes data has to work. I mean, you can't get here if you're working.
Absolutely. And the state, and when these, some of these issues have actually gone to state appeals, I think, when board members have appealed, they're dismissed from a board, and the state has allowed them to return because of, it was a work condition or something else.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I agree with you.
I mean, I'm not even saying...
Everything you're talking, I agree with you.
I don't even want a hostile environment. I was hoping maybe just a heart-to-heart, and the person would realize, yeah, I'm missing a lot of meetings, and there's a lot of votes, and there's a lot of good things going on, maybe. Just a thought.
I agree.
Just a thought. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Philomena Salili. I live at 24 Royce Brook Road in Hillsborough. This is my first Board of Education meeting. However, I have been following the Board of Education very thoroughly in my 40 years in Hillsborough. I am a former educator, I am retired. One of the issues, or several of the issues that I'm concerned about, is how we influence our teenagers and our parents. And I'm going to focus tonight strictly on the drug testing program. I have not heard, and perhaps there is, and I'm here to be educated tonight as well, a positive spin on anything that we've discussed tonight. And on the drug testing issue, this is a very positive opportunity to educate our students in the middle school and in the high school where it's rampant. Statistics are important to me, but if we can save one, if we can save two through drug testing, I wonder if consideration has been given, let's say, in the health classes, to take what I'm saying tonight and put it into a positive. For example, if you know someone who is taking drugs, what opportunity do you have? The opportunity that you have is to save a life. Are we telling our students that information? Our teenagers today love to hear the word, "You have a choice." You have a choice to take drugs or not to take drugs, or to help a friend who you know might be taking drugs. To me, this is a very positive thing, and I see perhaps in the health classes that type of education, whether it's with drugs, I'm focused on drugs because it's rampant. I probably should have said I was a former history teacher and a guidance counselor. It was several years ago when drugs were just starting to come out, and that's the approach that was taken. Don't be afraid to come to us and tell us. Don't be afraid to consider the harm that it can do you. And we show them the harm that it can do to them, how one can get addicted. And it presents to them a very positive, I perceive it and had success with it several years ago. Now I know it's more rampant, and I know we have to re-educate in some cases, but, and perhaps you're doing it, and if you do, I give you credit, but we need to do a better job. What better way to tell our students, "Help a friend"? I don't even know if that's a slogan or whatever, it just popped into my head. But to help a friend who is on drugs, we can do it anonymously, as I heard, you know, before, but it's a positive thing. Drug testing is positive, you can help a friend, you have a choice as to whether you would like to become involved in drugs. Peer pressure is very strong, however, this is what can happen if you do. So my suggestion is looking at how we're telling them about drug testing or any other social justice issue that happens to be occurring.
So some of our programs do address exactly that and peer issues, and I'd like Mrs. Haas to speak to that.
Yeah. In fact, first of all, thank you for all you do on the Board of Adjustment, and appreciate your community services as well.
I wasn't going to bring that up tonight because it's a whole separate issue, but...
But at the Chasing the Dragon program that was just last week, in addition to a film, which was very strong, actually sponsored by the FBI, we actually had a panel which included a former student who was addicted. We had a professional treatment counselor, we had Darren Powell, our police chief, and we had, we had actually an FBI agent. And every single one of them was talking about exactly what you were saying, and I take a lot of notes. Our professional counselor made it very clear to all the high school students there that they need to talk to people, they need to educate themselves, they need to go online and look at all that stuff. The FBI was saying, "We're not looking to bust users, we're looking to get the big people who are addicting our children, so you can come to us." Our police chief said, "The best way you could be a friend to your friends is not to let friends drive drunk, not to let," you know, just like we've all been shown, you know, or taught to take our friends' keys away after they've had a few. He was saying that we need to do that as far as drugs are concerned, too, and we should be a friend to these people, just, you know, the kind of positive spin you were talking about. And he said, "To go, you know, if you don't want to report somebody to the police or to schools, talk to that person's parents, because at least you can start a process whereby that child will get some help." And following his statement, the former student of ours said, "I wish somebody had told my parents that I needed help." And it was devastating to me, I have to say. And those positive messages, I give our counseling department a lot of credit because on a day-to-day basis, our Gil Pilardi, Rebecca Balaguer, they're meeting with tons of kids, and they're not only individually counseling, but they're doing lunchtime, you know, group sessions where anybody can come in and get those positive messages. And I'd also like to give great credit to our new counseling supervisor, Jess Smedley, who has come to our education committee meetings, along with Lorraine Borick, our supervisor of nursing. These people are so extremely dedicated to our kids, and they're really doing everything they can, and, you know, they're ready, willing, and able to do more. And we know it's an issue, and it's very, very clear to our staff, and a lot of the things that we're doing are not readily evident to the public, but, you know, it's happening. It's really happening.
Well, it's good to hear that it's happening. I would just have one more to add to that. When we hear FBI and we hear government involvement, I think it's crucial and it's very important. But the intimacy that can develop, and as you brought up with the guidance counselors, having been one myself, that intimacy that you can develop and share with them, how much they can personally help that particular friend of theirs, it's also a deterrent for them to become involved in drugs, but also to, excuse me, to support the drug testing program, is that it's helpful. So I hear what you're saying, I agree with it 100%. I'm very happy to hear it, but I still think that sense of intimacy where they feel, "I really have an opportunity to help someone." So that's kind of where I'm coming from. But I do, I'm very pleased to hear that we do have a positive spin.
You'd also be pleased to hear that the FBI agent who was, well, actually, there were two. One of them is a graduate of Hillsborough High School.
Oh, is there? Oh, well, that's good news.
We have a lot of pride in our...
All right. Thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
My name is Dora Zep. I'm 117 Devonshire. I am a mom of two. I have a second grader and a freshman. And I'm going to start off with my little one first, because I did tell the parents from Woodfern that I would come and ask, there's serious problems, I guess, with our buses. And my bus was finally fixed as far as the lateness in the morning. I just want to know if that has been addressed. I know as of last week, we still had buses not showing up on time. My concern, I'm a stay-at-home mom, so I have, thank God, the ability to drive my kid to school if the bus is late or it doesn't show up. However, a lot of these parents are working parents, and I really do feel for them. They're scrambling in the morning, not knowing, and there's no communication. They don't get the alert on time. Usually they get the alert after their kid's been, either the bus showed up already and they're at school, or, so I just want to know as far as the buses and the communication between you and the vendor.
So Mr. Mahmood is in charge of transportation in his role as business administrator, so Mr. Mahmood?
We were not aware of any specific issues at Woodfern that are continuing to date, but I appreciate the input. Maybe after a meeting, if you have a few minutes, if you want to share with me specific routes, we can take a look at that.
Sure. I know you and I spoke about our bus, which was, I love the way you handled it. It was, you know, handled right away. So my bus is fine, but there are still other buses in our route that are having issues.
Yeah, if we, if you don't mind sharing, maybe we can just chat, find out which ones are questionable, and we'll get right on it, the same way with yours, and we'll see if we can get it resolved.
And I just want to say, we certainly need the help of parents to hold the bus companies accountable.
Yes, and I do tell the parents, you need to contact the board, the Transportation Department, but I know that last time I spoke to the Transportation Department, the woman there, Lisa, told me that sometimes the communication from the vendor to you guys comes in a little late. So I think that needs to be fixed. Then I also want to address a mental issue. I know that we've talked about it in the past couple of weeks, and I know that we've been addressing the high school, the middle school, and the Autton Road, but I just want to know that, want you to know that in the last couple of weeks, I've been talking to other parents, and the common theme among our first, second, third graders is the level of anxiety that is popping up in our schools. Thank God, and thank you for, you know, putting guidance counselors in all our schools now, full-time. Ms. Register is phenomenal in our school, and she's been doing great work with our kids. However, it's still an issue where we're having kids in second grade having meltdowns, like little tantrums, like little kids, and that should not be happening at that age in December. That should have been, you know, September thing, kind of thing, and then moving on. We're still having issues with kids not functioning properly in school. Anger, meltdowns of emotion, confusion, and I think for me, my son comes home and I'll, you know, he does okay getting to school and everything, and I'll ask him, "What was the best part of your day?", and he'll tell me gym, because all they want to do is have time to play. So gym once a week, or once in a six-day cycle, I don't think it's enough. These kids need to have gym every day, some kind of activity. So for me, that's a big concern. So I know that we're worried about the high school level and older kids, but how about if we start focusing on the little kids? I know that other people have mentioned programs that you can bring in. It only takes two to three minutes a day where a teacher can take time before she starts her class, and I think somebody mentioned mindfulness, something like that, where they could teach the kids how to handle stress even at that age. Because unfortunately, our curriculum that we have now is not anywhere near that curriculum we had when my daughter was in kindergarten. My daughter loved kindergarten, first, second, third. She loved her elementary life. My son, not so much. He's not enjoying it because all he says is, all they do is test me all day. They put tests in front of me. And my son does have special needs, so that, on top of that, is just too much for them. And I just want to know, now that we're working on the budget, if, you know, I know that we need more sacks in the high school, because two of them, it's not enough up there. I know there's one missing in Autton Road, I hear from some of the parents. So I'm requesting two sacks in the high school, one in Autton Road, and one maybe that can float around in the elementary schools. So we need that. And also, I just want to say that the first year of my daughter here in high school as a freshman, I was prepared for a culture shock, for sure, but to the level where it's at right now, I never prepared for that. She went to the homecoming dance, and she came back a different girl. I was not happy with that. So I want for things to change, and I know the policy's coming in, in January, and I'm happy about that, and I wish it would have been done earlier, because I know this has been going on for a couple of years, but I just want an environment for my daughter to come to school and feel safe. She does not use the bathrooms until, you know, I think health, which is her last period. She does not use the bathrooms until, you know, I think health, which is her last period, because that's the only ba- the only time she knows of a bathroom that she feels safe to go to. So I don't understand that. I never had that issue going to high school. I want an environment where my daughter can come, feel safe, go to a dance, and enjoy her time with her friends, and not be shocked into what she's seeing. She refuses to come to dances anymore. So unless, you know, this policy helps clean up stuff before the next dance, she probably won't be coming. And that's sad. Because my daughter does not participate in after-school activities, because she has activities outside of school that she takes most of her time. So she's unable to participate in sports and stuff like that. But she would like to participate in dances and other stuff. But if, if that's not going to be safe for her, I, I won't allow her to come. And that's the only other connection she's going to have to school. So if you can please think about all these things. I know the budget and all the other money that needs to be going to other places, but we need to focus on the mental health of our kids first, so that then the rest of it can flourish out. And then they could get a good education, have a good experience in high school, and maybe be successful adults. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. Pascua Mazzanero by Waterway. First of all, I, I really want to thank the Guidance Department again. Great job they did with them. My son this week, things are coming along, it's, it's nice, but, you know, it's always a problem dealing with administration. Unfortunately, I believe at the high school, it's always a parent's fault, it's always the kid's fault. It's never, you know, let's see what we can do. So that's my first, my first problem and thing I wanted to discuss, I wanted to say. The second thing is, who said it? Jamie over here, Mr. Moore. Yeah, it'd be great if they take away their Chrome, their phones, but these kids are getting around with those Chromebooks, going on Google Hangouts, figuring out ways to get around it. Can we shut off the Google Hangouts? I mean, we've had these things for four years. The kids, it's like, you know, it's a priority interrupt. The kid's sitting there doing his work, boop, Google Hangout, from my friend and, you know, Jim. The last thing I want to say is standardization. What I found that's really tough in this school district for kids is they're expected to be fit in some mold. It's not anymore where, look, if you look at, I guess we, we come out of, 98% of our kids are going to college, which is great, but not every kid wants to go to college. And we're trying to force these kids into that, where they're not themselves anymore. When we were kids, we had what we had to do. You know, some kids, you know, went to the military. I just feel that this whole standardization, and it's a whole, it's, it's, it's an American thi- not an American thing, but it's throughout the whole country, right? The, the parks and this and that, doesn't help anybody. It's not helping these kids. They're under the stress, "Well, I can't be like this guy. I'm not in the four AP classes. I can't be like this kid. I'm not the athlete." We got to start teaching them that they are who they are. And that's, and that's it. You know, one, that's, I think that's a lot of the pressure and a lot of the stress. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Steve Cohen, 60 Up Terrace. Hey, I really have a problem speaking right now. I just wanted to thank the board for the vaping policy. I applaud. I want to say thank you to Jen. I hope they appoint you back. We need you. First reading on the marketing, and I just question, I hope that maybe when you guys go back into committee, you question the value of spending the money versus what the community is looking for, which are more counselors throughout the district, which is more important, in terms of the value, what you get for the dollar. I know Mr. Gillette likes to value versus the benefits versus cost benefits, and consider the, the applicable value of spending the money. I can remind the board of a vote that was taken on the last day of the year prior to my becoming a board member. They approved a gender studies class. They invested well over, in the five-figure range, and it failed. So I just hope that's considered. I know that's a very tight budget, it always is. When it gets down to the nub, there's very few dollars that are able to be considered in the pot for things that we need. I'm shaking his head. We've been in those meetings for many, many hour, and it's hard to make those decisions. But I don't think hiring counselors is a hard decision. And thank you.
Do you have any old business from the, or other business from the board?
First of all, I wanted to thank the Education Committee for coming up with a proposal for the vaping and other drug paraphernalia. With that being said, in lieu to the tragedy that somebody had mentioned, what happened to the other district, I just wanted to read something that I found very interesting, because we're always talking about that Hillsborough has a drug problem. But what we need to figure out is what is leading to the drug problem, and which I believe is stress, anxiety, and depression, which ironically, most of you guys came up and discussed today. So what I wanted to read is, numerous studies have linked stress, alcohol, and drug addiction. In fact, chronic stress is well-known substance abuse risk factor. Researchers believe that stress causes brain changes with the potential to lead to addiction. Other anxiety disorders are also connected to higher rates of addiction. With that being said, I do have one question that I believe the only person that could answer would be Dr. Antounas. At the high school level, how many levels of math class do we have? I know we have ASI, I know we have advanced placement, and, I mean, how many, like, if you're a senior in high school, how many levels of class can you take? Like, for instance, it's no longer a 4.0 to graduate with. People can graduate higher than that. People can now take courses at the college level and go into college as a sophomore. I believe we are throwing all these expectations to our children to strive to be the best. We want people to come to our district, like Dr. Schiff has said numerous times before, because we're a great district. I don't want to be known as heroin high with a side of corruption that is happening. I want to be known as a great district, where lots of people graduate and go on to college. And you know what? If they don't, then they become something else that's just as wonderful. I'm tired of my children coming home freaking out because of the standardized tests. I was in Starbucks the other day and overheard high school students already frantically trying to prepare for the park test, knowing that they need that to graduate. There has to be something that we can do to de-stress these children. These kids have more stress, I swear, than we as parents do. I don't ever recall, growing up in the 80s, having this much stress, this much anxiety, and it all has to do with trying to be the best, trying to get the most As, trying to get into that higher level of class that other people here, you know, that their friends are in. I mean, just, I was talking to one of my social workers, I apologize, I'm kind of like all over the place. Just this weekend, we had two patients in the hospital. One that takes heroin and marijuana frequently, because he is so stressed out that he can't handle all the testing that he takes. And another girl was on a suicide watch, because she was afraid of failing, because one, she would disappoint her parents, and she would rather die than do that. So I just want to take a step back and try and figure out, what can we do as our district to help our children? Because I think, like Mr. Moore said, first of all, these should not be allowed in the school. I mean, this is ridiculous. So let's just get rid of that right now. We didn't have cell phones, and I think we all turned out fine. So if we can take that out, and if we can de-stress them, I think a lot of the heroin and the marijuana and the alcohol would either A, go away, or B, decrease. So again, going back to my first question to Dr. Antounas, how many levels of classes do these kids have?
Generally, there are three levels: college prep, honors, and AP, depending upon the course and the department. But typically, that's what it is.
And they're all weighted differently, correct? So on a 4.0, okay, so an A used to be back in the day, if you got an A, in all your classes, you graduated with a 4.0. Now, if you get an A in just all regular classes, you graduate with a 4.0. However, if you have AP classes, college prep classes, and I don't know what else, you can graduate with what, if you get all As?
You can be higher than 4.0.
Who, who is making all this? Like, this is ridiculous. I mean, is it not? I mean, is it just me?
It's not just you.
That's thinking this. But I think this is what is stressing our kids out, and this is why they are partaking in all these substances, to try and figure out how to decrease their anxiety.
So can I ask a question for Dr. Antounas, my, does, does the state now, and for a few years now, prohibit us from, I don't know if that's the right way to put it, but they desire all of their classes to be college prep, college prep classes? If I say it like that, the state wishes that they all should, all will be college prep classes?
College and career-ready. College and career-ready is the standard.
So when, a decade ago, when we used to have a general education class in sci- in some sciences or in math, we were more or less prohibited from offering that class now?
Like a standard-level class?
Yeah, standard level, I guess, if you call it that.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm going back to the 70s or 60s.
We were, it was from one day to the next, you must remove these classes.
So that literally came down from one day to the, I remember, I was on the board, right?
Very clear, from the, from the executive county superintendent.
Yeah, I remember when that happened.
Oh, well, actually, from the educational specialist in the office.
Yeah, okay. So, so we're prohibiting, so, you know, every class must be at least a college prep class? I don't know if that helps you understand.
Okay, so then my next question has to do with the, the park test. Has all administrators taken the park test?
Is that, is that a question?
Just out of curiosity, for the park test that we demand our students to take, to graduate in order, to pass in order to graduate, have all our administrators taken the park test?
No, no teacher administrator has taken the park test.
Why?
Because it just came into being a couple of years ago, when they had already finished school.
But don't, but don't we think that, I mean, if you, I mean, don't you think that prior to sending out a test, that you guys should take it to see what it's like?
Well, this, it's a state mandate. It's actually a federal mandate, so that's totally out of everyone's control, not just in Hillsborough, across, across the country.
And a secure test.
It's, it's a secure test.
It's a secure test. There are no copies available for someone to take.
There are release test items. There are release test items that we encourage.
Because, I mean, it would just be curious to see if all you guys would do, I mean, all our administrators would do well. I mean, we're shoving down all these standardized tests, and I want to know how everybody else would do, because we're expecting our children to do so well, when I would like to know how the administrators would do on these tests, because I understand it is ridiculous.
If I, if I may. I'd like Dr. Schiff to chime in on this.
You know, I, I appreciate the upset on it, because we, we're going to have a new governor, we're going to have a new commissioner. The park test is not a local decision. This is something that's done at the state level. And you are right, that it is a very demanding assessment.
Yes.
And we, when we first started it, we actually had some, some parent meetings, and we shared some sample test items. It is a very rigorous test, there is absolutely no doubt. And I think as a state, we have to consider where to find the sweet spot in terms of assessment, and not over-assessing in a way that, that leads to unhealthy levels of stress.
Right. I mean, I'm just thinking, like, of all the different ways that we could de-stress our children, so they're not looking to other ways to release it. I guess that's, that's really what my bottom line is. I want to help the teachers, I want to help these students. Because what is going on in our district, I don't want to be known as heroin high.
I agree. I agree, Dana, thank you.
You know.
Any other old business from the board? Dr. Sasan?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank the Guidance Department for the Chasing the Dragon Junior Seminar. I think all of us were there for at least part of it, or all of it. And I left there. It was, it was, it was very compelling. It, it absolutely, you know, sort of focused my belief that if you put maggots up on a, on a screen, kids respond. Yeah. But this was something that was in the works for a year, is that right, Ms. Smedley?
Yeah.
This was not done overnight. I wanted to say that, so that the community could hear, that while we all appreciate your coming here and sharing your suggestions, and, and we want to hear more, there is a misconception that that, that that assembly was done in response. And, and so I just wanted to say that these things, these conversations are ongoing. We have great educators who care so much and want to help the kids. I mean, we've, we've referenced the Saks, I think they do great work, and I would agree that we need more. But I don't want to give the impression that everything that we have been doing is reactionary. We are proactive, especially the Guidance Department, in bringing new ideas and new programs. One thing that I had asked was, besides health, besides where you would expect the drug messaging to happen, why isn't it happening in English class, when somebody has to write an essay? Why isn't it happening in social studies, or other appropriate electives and things like that, economics? There's lots of places where we could, where we could message about drugs. And the response was, "Why do you think it's not happening?" And, and I can honestly say, my daughter, my older daughter, who's a nursing student, has said to me, "Mom, you know, I, I appreciate the, the education that I got in Hillsborough," because she goes to a smaller, a smaller Catholic school. A lot of the kids come from, come from Catholic schools, K through 12 schools. And when they're faced with something about how to think, in some cases, they have been taught what to think, not how to think for themselves. And, you know, she said, "I had to write an essay one day about the legalization of marijuana in an English class. And then, and I had to pick a side, and I wrote the essay. The next week, I had to give the opposite, the opposite side." So I think we, that's a really good example of, we're not, we're not necessarily restricting the messaging to just health classes. And, and, you know, obviously, we're encouraging, as a board, to look for more occasions to do, to do just that, and, and to really teach our kids how to make good decisions. Again, not what necessarily to think, but how to think, and, and then change that into action. And I think the Guidance Department has some really good plans for how to, how to sort of age-deescalate that even further with having the elementary school counselors, which I think was a really good decision by the board. I wasn't here on the board when they made that, but I would support it. I also wanted to just make a comment about, about phones and, and the issues with the Chromebooks. If they, if the kids are on Wi-Fi, and I am a parent who tries to get in touch with my kid during the day, and she never responds, except for at lunch and maybe between class. So I know, and I know there are teachers who are saying, "You cannot use your phone during class." I know there have been parents who have called, who have called me and said, you know, "Oh, my kid got his phone taken away." What, you know, I don't know that there's broad support from parents to not have kids allowed to bring their, their phone into the school, though, you know, I think teachers do, again, support the policy and tell them they can't use it during class. But we do have, our Wi-Fi really does restrict them from going to certain sites. They cannot go to Snapchat, they cannot go to Twitter, they cannot go to Facebook. And in some cases, you know, my daughter has said, for certain classes, she needs to go to those sites, like, because they're writing in US government politics, something about recent things happening and getting some opinions. And Twitter is, of course, the best place for the kids to access for that sort of thing. So she actually uses data to do that. But, you know, I think there are things that we can potentially affect changing at the board, the, the issues that The issues that Dana brought up with respect to a 4.0 versus getting 1.05 times that for an honors class and 1.1 times that, which is what an AP class is. You know, if we didn't offer that, our students would not be able to compete at the college level. They wouldn't get into good schools. I, you know, I, I know you don't have a student there yet, but I can honestly tell you that it's not the school district itself, but there are a lot of exterior pressures on these kids. And I'm not saying that, I'm not defending that. I'm saying there are things, we have to really focus on what we can solve, because the problems are numerous. Our, our scope is much less than that, and our budget is constraining as well. And while I would agree that we have to look at every opportunity to help our kids deal with the mental pressure, the stress that they're on, I've told my kids numerous times, "You couldn't pay me enough money to go back to high school." And, and I got out, and I went to a good school, and I went to graduate school, and I know what stress is. I wouldn't want to go back. They are under more and more pressure, and parents have to be aware of that. Parents have to start at, at home, which I think so many of you are doing. I'm not sure how, how permeated into the whole district, the knowledges of what our kids are going through. But we really need to focus on what we can change. And we have great teachers, and we have great guidance counselors, and they will do whatever they can. And we, as a board, have to make sure they have the right tools. I think the policies that we put in place is one step. We can do more, and we will do more. When we talk about the budget, I hope people remember how many people came up and said the things that are most important to them about making sure that we have activities to, to, you know, sort of keep our kids busy, but also the mental health professionals at each of the schools to make sure that they are dealing with whatever stresses come from either at school or at home, because not all of our families are, you know, perfect places to grow up in. And we know, we have a lot of kids coming in not knowing where their next food, their next meal is coming from, or our parents is dealing with, with issues at home, or a sick relative. So, I know we do need to make sure of all of that, but I want to make sure that, that we all understand. We are happy to listen to every suggestion, and we are trying our best to enact what we think is possible for us to do, but we, we can't do everything. So, as you come up, you know, don't ask for the moon and the stars without saying, "These are the most important things," right? Give us your priorities, because I can think of a million different things to do, but it's important for us to understand the public and their priorities. I think a lot of you have made that very, made them very clear. I just want to make sure that when you come up, you come with concise suggestions and, and sort of in order of importance. I think it is really important for us to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shasana. Any other, anyone else from the board? So, I said I would reserve my remarks till, to the end. I want to personally thank Ms. Haley for her service to the board. I remember it was just about seven years ago, I think, where I first met Jen. We were introduced by a mutual friend. I think the first thing he said was, do you remember? He said, "Here's someone that you should get to run for the board." And I hope that helped a little bit. And I know we used to talk almost daily in the first few years. I hope, I think it got you up to speed pretty quick. Absolutely. And, and I appreciate everything you've done on the board. I say that sincerely, and thank you again for your service. I want more round of applause. Seeing nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, for adjourned. Thank you.